So, welcome everyone to the April 21st, 2020 Ogden City Council meeting. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present via Zoom. Thanks so much for joining us if you are from the public. And we apologize if we intermittently have technology issues. We're still adjusting to this format. One thing I wanted to note just at the beginning of the meeting is we did have some comments about the new format of the meeting. And according to our communications manager, this is the best and most secure format that we're able to offer you now, which is a little different than when we first started the meeting. So we'll talk with you all in a few moments about how you might be able to provide some public input on the public hearings that are coming up. The first item on the agenda is a common consent item, the fiscal year 2021 fiscal, or sorry, financial principles. And Glenn, were you planning to do a presentation on that?
I was not at this time since it's on common consent, but I can certainly answer any questions if you have any.
Sure, any questions from council members? See, none would be happy to take a motion on that item.
So I'm moved.
Was that council member Lopez?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Lopez and a second by council member Stevens, I think was one of those folks. And this is voice vote on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and bless you whoever just means, I don't know who that was. Great, so now we're having the public hearing. So the way that we are planning to do this is the five-year consolidated plan and action plan amendments. And we're going to have presentations on the two items under A. And then we will offer an opportunity for public input and then we'll take actions. So first step, I believe, would be Kathy and Ward possibly.
That is correct.
Awesome, thanks Ward Ogden.
Our screen.
Madam Chair, if I could just jump in while he's getting that screen up. These are, these are the two items that we are requesting that you continue to next week. So if you want to open the public hearing, but then just continue the public hearing for a week, that would be preferable.
Great, thank you Glenn Simms.
Okay, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
We're ready, thank you.
Very good, thank you. This is Ward Ogden, I'm the manager of the Community Development Division. And we have three items actually that will be covered. Two are required in the hearing and one is precursor. The reason that we're delaying the adoption until next week is because things move very quickly in the current pandemic environment. And we have a requirement that we amend our citizen participation plan as a precursor to amending our five-year consolidated plan, which is a precursor to amending our annual action plan. And the reason that we're doing all of these things is in response to the pandemic, we're trying to make funds available to assist local businesses with their cash flow needs. And so that's really the basis for the discussion. So the first item is the citizen participation plan amendment. The citizen participation plan basically is a procedure for involving the public in adopting our consolidated plans and action plans. These changes are temporary, they only occur from April of this year through September of 2021. And the changes are needed because they need to, they're providing mechanisms for speedy changes to our plans so that we can make funds available in a more expeditious fashion. And also to deal with the social distancing requirements. So the changes are that the 30-day comment period is reduced to five days. The same procedures are employed with sending a notice to the paper and all the places where the, the public comment, the public notices are given, but the, the comment period is reduced to avoid the, the timeframes for, or to give us a shorter timeframe. The second item is that it allows virtual meetings instead of onsite in-person meetings, and that's exactly what we're doing now, we're having virtual meetings. And then the consolidated plan documents are available online instead of at the library and other depositories where people would have to go into a building and look at a hard copy. So now they're available online. So those are the changes that are proposed in the citizen participation plan. The consolidated plan is proposed to be amended. And the timeframe for the amendment on the consolidated plan, the public comment period for the consolidated plan amendment is a five-day period as well. If we didn't do the citizen participation plan amendment, it would then have to be a 30-day comment period. And we wouldn't be able to move forward with the small business loans that we're trying to do. So the five-year consolidated plan, as we mentioned in the work session just, just prior to this, the five-year plan is basically the mechanism that the city uses to receive federal funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Each year we receive a grant from the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Program. Anytime we make a change, they have to be amended if we change the scope of location or intended beneficiaries of the programs. And each year we submit an action plan that implements the, the consolidated plan. The changes that we're proposing are, are very simple in nature. There's three objectives that are used for the administration of Community Development Block Grant. The low and moderate income benefit and the slums and blights alleviation benefit are typical program objectives. The urgent need is a third objective, which is allowed only when the federal government designates an emergency and gives us the opportunity to use the urgent need certification. And so they have recently done that with the COVID pandemic. We're using that urgent need certification to give us greater flexibility in the administration of our funds. More businesses will be able to get the money than otherwise. And so it's an important thing to have in the plan, but we have to amend our consolidated plan to put that in there. We also have to put it in our goals to be able to use that urgent need objective to achieve goals in the response to the pandemic. So those are the two items that are being amended in the consolidated plan. Again, it's a large plan, but there's really only two things being amended. The action plan, the proposed amendments to the action plan are again driving at, for the most part, driving at making funds available for the small business loans, but also some small amendments to other programs, and I'll just briefly cover them. The increase in the budget for the current year's action plan is $778,188. Most, well, all of this money has come from, from program income that has come in through the sale of homes and through loan repayments and things like that. So that's an additional amount of money. In addition to that, $250,000 in block grant is, is reprogrammed from Target Area Public Improvements and $100,000 from the infill housing program. And that $350,000 is now programmed into the small business loan program to give additional funds for small business loans. It increases by 156,000 the economic, Special Economic Development Budget, 446,000 to the Quality Neighborhoods Program from the homes that were, that were sold, fixed up and sold. And then we have some help money, $56,000 in program income from loan payoffs to go into the help program. And then $120,000 is an increase in the block grant and the home administration. That's what we use for our overhead costs for the city. The changes to amendment number two to the, the action plan are to adopt the HUD Urgent Need Certification. So we have to have the urgent need in the action plan as well as the consolidated plan. And then we also have to amend our, update our goals to include the response to the COVID-19. That allows us then to put in place our existing Community Development Block Grant to be used for the small business loans using the urgent need certification. And that's what we're trying to do right now. So as of next week, hopefully when the resolutions are adopted, the, the pool of applicants will be able to start using urgent need certification and the added funding that's proposed in the budget. The, here are the changes, a chart that just shows the changes, the reduction in the Target Area Public Improvements of 250, the infill housing going down by 100, Special Economic Development up by 156, small business loans up by 350, Quality Neighborhoods increase of 446,000, and Help Program 54,000, and the block grant and home admin up by 120,000. Conplan amendment proposed changes. This is, this basically just recaps what we have, have just talked about. We're adopting the urgent need certification in our conplan and adding it to our goals both in the, in the consolidated plan and in the action plan. And then we're putting in the $778,000 as we just described. So I think that's the, the brief discussion that we've had. We've covered this two weeks ago again in a, in a work session and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council members?
Chair, Chair Chaburka, my only question is, I guess procedural. Just listening to the presentation and thinking about the issues with the public notice and amending the public participation plan. Are there urgent needs that are going to have to wait for another week while we get our procedural ducks in a row? And if so, is it, if, are those needs so pressing that do we need to do an emergency meeting before next Tuesday or what? Any thoughts on, on demands for those needs?
I talked to the, the management at the Business Information Center who's processing the loan documents and they're, they're very diligent and working very hard to stack applications. They do have the non-federal funds that you, that the council has approved. And the, the loans that are sitting now are able to be funded through the non-federal funds. And those that are anticipating using the new block grant allocations with the urgent need, by the end of the week, we'll have a new allocation or a new pool of applicants waiting. And so they think that they'll be okay with the non-federal funds that were allocated. And so we shouldn't have applicants waiting for funding and requiring an emergency meeting.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that feedback, Ward, appreciate that.
Any other questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, this is Glenn from the council office again. As far as procedure goes, if, if possible, if we could get the presentation for the budget amendment side, just for the record, and then you can take action or, or open the public hearing for both of those items.
Sounds good. Vice Chair Blair, did you have a question? I just noticed you're, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll stop sharing. Okay.
This is Lisa Stout, I'm the city comptroller. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. So with all of the good work that Community Development is doing, we then take the action plan and put it into the city's general ledger. So the budget action you have before you takes the annual action plan information that work has gone through and amends the city budget to increase the major grants sent by 778,175. The changes are outlined on this slide before you to increase the small business loan program. There's a small adjustment to the BIC informations, the Business Information Center. Those funds are really being combined with the CDBG administrative funds. And then the public, target area public improvements are being decreased as long as, as well as the infill housing. An increase to the Quality Neighborhoods CDBG and the Quality Neighborhoods Home Grant, both. And an increase to the Help, Help Loans of 54,675. Special Economic Development Projects or CDBG projects are being increased 156,625, as well as administrative increases to both CDBG and home with the total increase of 778,175. These increases are primarily being funded with program income from the home and the CDBG programs. Any concerns regarding the budget opening?
Any questions? Councilmember Stevens, did you have a question?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
So, do you have a quick, Lisa, so is that small business loan program include the 609,000 or do we wait till that actually is encumbered into our account?
That does not include the 600,000. That will be included in the fiscal year 21 budget as part of a budget you'll be reviewing in a few weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and so now we'll have the opportunity for any public inputs. And Brandon Garside will give an overview of how that will work for the public.
Thank you Chair Chaburka. Yeah, if you are viewing tonight's council meeting via Zoom, at the bottom of your screen, you will see the option to raise your hand. If you are joining us via telephone, which it looks like nobody is, but just for future reference, to raise your hand just over the phone, you can dial star nine and then that will raise your hand and that will alert us and then we can unmute you and you will have your three minutes to address the council.
Great, thank you so much. So for this public hearing, we'll take comments on this item alone, the consolidated plan amendment number two and the action plan amendment number two. And we ask that you say your name and then also that we'll have three minutes and I believe there'll be a visible so we'll be able to hear how long you're speaking. So feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to make any comments. Trying to give a couple of extra moments just in case someone's figuring out their technology.
Chair, are you ready yet?
Please.
I would make a motion that we close the public hearing, saying that there has been no interest in making comment.
I think we were going to extend it to next week, right?
That's their preference, yeah.
Yeah.
Continue to next week.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I will withdraw that motion.
Oh, thank you. Would you like, would anybody else like to put a motion in or you can, councilmember Hare?
I make a motion, Chair Chaburka, that we extend the public hearing until next week.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if councilmember Lopez wants to clarify, that's for both of those items, that would be helpful. I have both of them for 3A, 3, and 2.
Yes, for items, sorry, hold on. Items, sorry, tell me again Glenn, I can't, I'm lost on the, on the document here, tell me again.
Sure, yeah, there are items 3A, 3, 1, and 2 would both be extended to next week.
3A, 3, 1, and 2?
Yes.
And I'll, okay, there we go.
Thank you so much, I know it's a little confusing. So we have a motion by councilmember Lopez and a second by councilmember Hare to extend the public hearing for both items on 3A.
Three.
Three, sorry.
One, two.
Yeah.
I got it now, I got, I got you. 3A, 3, 1, and 2.
So I'm guessing that's a voice vote, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Thank you, we'll just go with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you guys, you're helping me through this whole thing, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Yeah, next we have the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment, the seismic retrofit for Fire Station Number Four. Amy, would you like to make any comments before we introduce the staff? Okay, so is that Lisa Stout that's making that?
Yes.
Yes, there she is, she's starting to share her screen, thank you Lisa.
Okay, sorry about that, can you hear me? Okay.
We can, thank you.
This is Lisa Stout, I'm the city comptroller. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this budget amendment before you tonight. This is an amendment to increase the funding for the retrofit, the seismic retrofit for Fire Station Four. In fiscal year 19, 1.4 million, just over 1.4 million was funded to this project. As the city has gone out to bid, it, it discovered that the project needed additional funding in the amount of just over $1 million, just under $1.1 million. This appropriation will increase the medical services budget by $1,073,900 and the CIP budget for $1,073,900 because we're asking council to transfer money from the medical services fund to the CIP fund for that budget increase. So the total budget amendment is just over $2.1 million. The medical services fund had a fund balance of 2.3 million at the end of fiscal year 19. With this appropriation, that, that fund balance will be just about $1.3 million remaining. And we do have Chief Matthew here with us if you have any additional questions about the project itself.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Why do we have that, that kind of balance in the medical fund? How does that work? How do we accumulate that large balance?
The medical services fund is an enterprise fund, the charges for services are for ambulance care.
I'm sorry Lisa, I'm sorry, your voice is kind of muffled, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Much better, thank you so much.
The medical services fund, excuse me, is a, is a internal, excuse me, an enterprise fund. We provide ambulance services for individuals and the charges for those services go into this fund to support that activity. So any, any fund balance that is accumulated is because the charges for services, for ambulance services has exceeded expenditures. The total ambulance billings that we have in that fund are just right around $10 million. So a fund balance of $2 million is not, is not significant compared to the amount of revenue we have coming in.
You said it's about $10 million, the revenue or the incoming revenue?
So total charges for services are over $10 million. And then we have insurance discounts, so the net revenue in that fund, I believe, runs around $6 or $7 million.
Okay.
But that's not, but that's not the balance of the fund.
Correct.
That's the revenue, that doesn't, I think you're asking about the balance, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So any, so, so that those services are supported by the fees that are charged and then any additional revenue that isn't spent on services is accumulated in that fund to fund balance.
And I asked, I asked the question last week about what the fund balance was and I recall it was somewhere around 2 million, does that sound right?
It was 2 million at the end of fiscal year 19. With this appropriation, it will be just over 1.3 million.
Okay.
And, and just so council is aware, this is how we funded all of the fire station retrofits we've, we've done. It's been, been great for the city to be able to go to this fund for those types of needs.
So the reason why I ask the question is because I'm just, I'm wondering, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how these works, but maybe you guys can help me understand. But having a balance like this and using it for capital improvement, which is great, it's something that we need, I, I, I'm in support of that. But it sounds to me like, are we, are we overcharging our, our citizens for ambulance services by having this leftover money? I, I had an experience personally, I've had a couple of experiences with ambulances, ambulance services. I had one not that long ago where my wife had to go to the hospital in an ambulance. And the bills that we have to pay are just really expensive. And, and so I'm just trying to, my conscience is telling me that I need to ask these questions to know if there's anything we should be thinking about what we're doing and our practices to not be overcharging people. And, you know, I, I heard some stories about people not wanting to call ambulances because it's so expensive. And, and so especially, you know, this is going to affect our low-income community members the hardest. I've heard stories, not here in Ogden, I don't know that they're true, but I believe they're true. I've heard stories of people calling Ubers to go to the hospital instead of calling an ambulance. So I'm just, I'm just curious if, if, if anyone has any ideas whether my concerns maybe may have any merit or not. And if they don't have any merit, I mean, it's fine and I, and I, and I support the, I mean, I'm in favor of the, of the capital improvements that we need to make because I know they're important, they're needed. But I, but I just, you know, I just, I was just, I was just curious about that.
Now, that's a great question, councilmember Louise Lopez. I'll let Chief Matthew answer this question. He, he deals a lot with the setting of these rates and has a lot more insight to that than I do.
Thank you, councilmember Lopez, can you hear me okay in the rest of the?
Yes, yes Chief.
One of the things you should know is the, the ambulance rates are set by the state of Utah, the Bureau of VMS, they're rate regulated. It's one of the few areas in medical services that is rate regulated by the state. And they take input and data that, that they use to determine the rates. The other thing that about the use of the rate system is, is what Lisa mentioned about contractual obligations. When, when we bill, I mean, say a Medicare recipient, we have to accept what When, when we bill, I'm saying Medicare recipient, we have to accept what Medicare pays and we have to accept the, what they call the allowable amount as what's covered, which they, Medicare then pays 80% and then we turn around and the balance of 20%. If you're a Medicaid recipient, we bill Medicaid and what Medicaid pays is what we receive and we write off the balance. Now, we do have some provisions and, and if you look at medical services as a whole, unfortunately, one of the reasons medical services generally are expensive is because those that, that can pay, pay for those that cannot pay. And so there's a certain amount of people that we write off the cost of all the service and we don't collect anything. Our overall gross to net collection rate is 39%. It fluctuates between 39 and 40%. So that's one of the other reasons why it is higher, especially for those that, that can afford to pay. Some of the things that we have done and that have been approved by administration is we do have consideration for people that can't afford to pay for ambulance service. We have a charitable consideration policy that those that provide income statements and information that show where they're at financially, we can give them relief depending upon their income. So we do provide relief to some of the lower income individuals that use ambulance services. But as a whole, and that's not unique to Ogden City, there is a fair amount of what they call cost shifting from one to the other because people call an ambulance when they need it, not because they discernibly decided they would like to purchase one. And, and frankly, there's a fair amount of people that don't pay anything at all and that's why some of the rates are as expensive as they are set by the state. But when you get into the, the fund balance, I do want you to know is that, that, that the whole point of trying to be as frugal as we can with our annual operating expenses to help build a little bit of a fund balance is to help pay for facility improvements. As you, as every single fire station uses, has medical units in it, we, we perform wear and tear on the facility. We help, help wear it out. We help create the need to restore the facilities, excuse me, as well as the equipment. So we like to try to build a fund balance if possible. So from time to time, we take those funds and then reinvest back into the facilities to support the operation. So it is truly paying for the cost of the medical services provision of service because it's helping pay for the facilities that house, excuse me, house the stations. So that's why we, from an operating standpoint, try to be as frugal as we can, hopefully build a fund balance if we can so then we can reinvest long term into our facilities, if that helps you answer the question. But, but we are rate regulated.
Chief, was it 39% of the people do pay or 39% of them don't pay?
We, we collect 39% gross to net. So for every dollar we bill, we see 39 cents. It varies from, it, they, what they call the revenue mix or the demographics in which we serve. From area to area, you have a high population of Medicare clientele, like say maybe down in Washington County. There's a significant fixed payer amount and Medicare usually pays only about 40% of billed charges. Medicaid, we worked to get some Medicaid improvements five or six years ago and that's helped our medical fund balance. But it, when I started back in 1891, the national average collective rate was 70% or 70 cents on the dollar. And it's gone for us from 70, 70% down to 39%. And you'll find similar situations in the healthcare world. When you look at your hospital bills, once again, some of those are significantly higher and then you see deep contractual reductions if you're under a contract. And if you're not, then you, you pay the, you or the insurance company pays, pays the full amount. And that's, that's a problem in healthcare as a whole across the whole country in terms of the amount of what we call cost shifting that occurs. Not, it's not, doesn't just exist in ambulance service. It exists in all healthcare, unfortunately. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you have another comment or follow up, Councilmember Lopez?
You know, I, I, Chief, the Chief's response was very helpful to me. I, I still have some questions, but I think, I think I look forward to some other time to maybe discuss this with, maybe with Mark or, or with the mayor and just share, share some of my, I, I have to do more research about, about this and about what the Chief just, just said, but that was helpful. I appreciate it. I'm, I'm good.
And Councilmember Lopez, just let me reiterate too, especially for low income, there is a charitable consideration policy that we, we manage and deal with on a regular basis and our billing company will offer that to those that have financial hardship. And then they're, they're sent back to us through our administration and we, we examine all their income related information to go through an approval process. We use the poverty guidelines that are established by the county and the state to use as a baseline to determine eligibility for reduction in, in costs for people that are just financially strapped and are unable to pay for that. So we're, we, we appreciate we have that in place.
Absolutely. And I appreciate, I appreciate it too, Chief. My, a little bit of my concern was related a little bit to potentially even our, our middle class, our, our lower tier, the lower tier of our middle class that may not qualify for some of these assistance. Sometimes this population happens to just get kind of squeezed tight financially and is kind of left out of these, you know, these, these support systems. But again, that is something that is really not the moment to discuss right now. Your, your information is very helpful to me and it helps me, it, it, it's, it's certainly helping me with my, my, my original question. So I really appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Matthew or for Lisa Stoudt?
Chair, if I could just make a statement. When I first came onto the council, we did what we called a fire audit. And we had a company come in and actually go through and look over our fire department and our operations and they made several recommendations. And our fire chief has taken that audit and actually put it to use. And today, our fire department in much better shape than, than what we were 15 years ago or even 20 years ago. This retrofit is probably, as I understand it, is the last station to be retrofitted. And as you know, Magna had an earthquake and one of their fire stations was, is out of commission because, because of this. And if, when we go through and do this Station Four, now we can rest assured that all our fire stations are seismic retrofitted. And so if we have, heaven forbid, a earthquake here, there's likely that our fire stations would be intact to give the service to the community. I think that's a tribute, not only to our fire department, but also to the chief and the ministry in this audit that we're looking at.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any movement over there. And so now we'll have the opportunity, thank you so much, Lisa and Chief Matthew. And now we'll have the opportunity for public input on this item. And so again, you would raise your hand as Brandon indicated and you would state your name for the record and you will have three minutes to make your comment. Don't see any hands raised unless I'm missing something.
I'd be happy to make a motion if we're ready.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember White to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I don't believe we received any comments in the written form about this item either. And so now we'll, I'm happy to take action or take a motion on this item.
Chair, I'd make a motion then concerning the fiscal 2020 budget amendment about seismic retrofit and remodel of Fire Station Four that we adopt, that ordinance 2020-13.
I second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Stevens to adopt ordinance 2020-13. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chobertka?
Aye. Thank you. And that passes. So now we'll move on to comments. And this week, we did not receive any public comments through the public forum for April 13th to April 20th. And so we do encourage you, if you have comments for the council, you can fill out that form or call the office to leave comments. It'll be put in the public record. Also, of course, you can always reach out to individual council members via their email address or some of us have ours available as well. Love to hear from them. Now I'd love to offer a chance for Mayor Coldwell if you'd like to make any comments.
Sure, I just, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's great to see y'all and I just want to reiterate the flexibility and the conversations we had earlier about how we're moving this with a super conservative budget, knowing that we're going to have to be flexible as we look at individual projects is critically important. We, you know, being the first vice of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, all 249 cities in the entire state of Utah are working through some of the same unknowns that we're all dealing with right now. And so having a partnership where we can talk about these things, try to figure that out, try to get data and make data-driven decisions is critically important. I think everybody's been on the emotional side of this, myself included. I get text messages from my daughter all the time, "Dad, what about this? Dad, what about that? Dad, what about this?" I'm not a professional in a lot of those decisions. And so we're trying to just lean on those that know what is happening. And collectively, we as a city have gone lockstep with the, the local health department and the health and the state health department. And so that matters to us a lot, that we can have open dialogue and really lean on the data. And Chair, you working for a health organization, you know how important that is and we're lockstep with you all and the health organizations as we go through this. I know there's a lot of hunger for people wanting to know what's happening with budgets and revenue and expenditures and everything else. And we've never been through anything like this. So we really appreciate you all being willing to drill into this the next three or four, five weeks for you all. And when we present a budget that we don't know exactly what's going to happen, it's going to require a lot of commitment and patience and conversation with all of us. And so we respect the fact that you're all in this with us together and, and we'll figure it out. You've got really, really good professionals giving good advice and that matters. And we're committed to that. So I thank you all for being willing to participate in that patient process. We have no idea what's going to happen, but we're going to take all the professionals' advice and we'll give you everything that we hear, know, and we'll try to move through this together. So I want to hope all of you are feeling safe and feeling well. And like we've said in a lot of our Facebook videos and everything else, at this point, we're mile 18 into a marathon. This is the worst part of it because we've all been socially and physically distancing for so long. But let's just stay the course for a little bit. Let us know what you need. Let us know what we can provide. You've got a great team of people here to do that and thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thanks so much for joining us. How many council members have comments? I only see one unmuted, so I'm not sure if anybody has comments. Just wait a moment, just in case. Okay, well, I guess I just, I'll close with just making sure everybody's aware. We do have the special work session this Thursday that's focused on the Marshall Wait Center and Recreation in the city. And you can find that agenda on our website, listed under agendas, obviously, for April 23rd. And I believe that starts at 5:00 PM. Fingers crossed I have that right. Yeah, heads are shaking. Yes, thank you. And so you're welcome to join that, to listen in on the conversation that we have as council members and the administration. And we'd love to hear from you. You, you're, you're not invited to make comment during the work session. However, if you would like to reach out via the public comments area of our website or call the office to leave comment, that would be great. Or obvi- obviously, reach out to individual council members with your concerns or questions about that process. That would be really helpful. We, we really want to hear from you and we're happy to reach back out if you send us a message. And with that, I should also just mention that I'm, I'm really happy to be working for a healthcare system that really is preparing for this kind of pandemic, even though we would never want to. And I feel like we're being very proactive, working with lots of partners across the state to make sure that we're all prepared for what might come. And just really appreciate everybody staying at home and staying safe so that everybody can stay well. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to take a motion for adjournment if anybody'd like.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hare, a second from Councilmember Nadolski to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. See you Thursday.
Thanks, Angela. Appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.